Jertie?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier?
Here.
Kressel?
Here.
Okay, this is time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not on tonight's agenda, they come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please.
Good evening. Bobby Baird, 115 East 7. I got a question for council and administration here. Brandon, we want to know if the park is going to be open for any racing this winter, since it's been closed, and if it's available for Icebuster Days. You know, I'm not going to guarantee we're going to get the races, you know, with the schedule yet, but I just want to put a bunch of stuff on the schedule and can't use the park, or if we can't park down there, or just want to know what to do here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I did just have that question today, Bobby, and we are going to talk about that tomorrow at staff meeting and then confirm with our engineer, and then I will be getting that back to Joe Kressel to get back to CVB, which will probably make it back your way. So I hope to have an answer on that tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the schedules are coming out. You know, I wanted to get here sooner, but with BEATS, you know.
Yeah.
So, all right.
On that park, what was the reason it hasn't been open all summer? I've had a lot of questions on that.
I understand that it was expected that construction would have begun. There was some confusion, I think, there was a Phase 1 and Phase 2 of this grant. Phase 1 included the gently bridge access and some signage, and its completion date was actually June of this year in 2021, where the campground portion is actually due to be completed in 2022. I think there was some confusion with that, and I believe we did not apply for the permit to have the campground open in the 2021 summer season because of that.
I know, I just heard over BEATS how many people went to Eastside and all over for the BEAT process that come into town. So we got to make sure that we have that stuff kind of locked up, because there was a whole pile of them that went, and they went to Fertile also.
Yeah.
Fertile was giving them a heck of a deal to come down there and spend money. So, you know, whatever happens there, we got to make sure that we're.
Yeah, it actually was, I believe, a conscious decision not to renew it, but the mix-up was with the commencement of construction, being with the two phases of that grant, Phase 1 in 2021, the Phase 2 in '22. So it wasn't really an oversight, other than the oversight was just understanding those phases of the grants and those completion dates.
But I guess, you know, like Bobby was saying, there isn't going to be anything going on this winter. We should just open up and let them use it.
Absolutely agree. I'm just, I did not want to make a commitment for someone to have a schedule and then have to come back and say demolition was happening. So I just want to firm all that up. It's on our agenda. Tina has it on there for us to talk about at staff meeting tomorrow and just confirm with the engineering group.
Bobby, you're just looking for the area to be able to park there, right? Have a parking area that's kind of.
Yeah. And you plan on piling snow there?
Um, it's not as, it kind of depends on how far the utilities.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, because that's part of our track. That we build, that you haul down, or, you know, so.
For the snowmobile races, like they make them mountains.
That's separate from Icebuster Days already.
Yeah, but we got a plan for the races too. So, yeah. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Bobby.
Is there anyone else? Chad, is there anybody on the city phone bridge?
There is no one on the bridge, Your Honor. I will close it.
Thank you.
Agent logged off.
We have one presentation right. It's from Marty Seifert from Coalition of Greater Minnesota. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Marty Seifert. I am a lobbyist for Flirtdine Hood, which is a legal lobbying firm in the Twin Cities that works for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And just by way of background, the Coalition is a group of 109 only rural cities that represent your interests at the state capitol. The priorities that we represent are the priorities brought forward by the Board of Directors, mainly at the board meetings, and also input that we receive from the general membership at our summer, fall, and winter conferences. I have a sheet up on the projector, and it should be in your packets as well, that talks a little bit about the directives that were given to us by the board this year, last year going into this year, and kind of the results that we had from that. So on the side that says "local government aid" on the top left, should say "local government aid" in parentheses, LGA, you can see the way the format is laid out. We have the goal that CGMC laid out, the governor's proposal, the House proposal, the Senate proposal, and the final outcome. Interesting thing about Minnesota is that of the 49 states, we're the only state that has a divided legislature. We have a Senate controlled by Republicans and a House controlled by Democrats. And so for all the other states, they have a somewhat unified government, where in Minnesota, we have a divided government, which complicates things a little bit. In LGA, as some of you might recall, we had a certified multi-billion dollar deficit going into this year from the end of last year. And so we went from offense to defense. We got an increase in LGA two years ago in that particular budget in 2019. And so we went to go on defense to make sure local government aid didn't go backwards. There was some discussion about, because of COVID, the shutdowns, lack of revenue in the treasury, pending deficits. Should we meter out LGA slowly? Should we hold it back? Should we not pay it out? Whatever. I think, as everyone in this room knows, if they did that last December, that would have been pretty devastating, because your levy was certified, your negotiations with your unions are done, and there you would be sitting, probably have to drain your reserves or what have you. So we did have discussions with the Revenue Department, Governor's Office, legislative leaders, and the decision was made not to hold back LGA or to reduce it in any particular form. In fact, as we went through session, we got a lot of support for it. The Senate actually added a one-time supplemental piece. For those cities that have an anomaly in their formula, and Crookston's not one of them, but there's some folks not far from here, like Warroad, East Grand Forks, Detroit Lakes, that are formula anomalies, where they would go backwards on the old LGA formula. So the Senate added in money to make sure that nobody went backwards, and that did succeed all the way through session. And so LGA stayed whole, and there were no reductions. Some people ask, what happened? How in the world did we go from a big deficit to a surplus? And the short answer to that is a large influx of billions of dollars in the federal government. Federal government didn't come and rein a whole bunch of money down in the state treasury. We would have a major problem with our red ink in the state. But they came in, and the money was there. Next couple items, the PFA, the Public Facilities Authority, deals with sewer and water funding. That's largely a rural program. We lobbied for bonding money, but this was not a bonding year. But we were able to get 15.9 million into the program through the legacy bill, and that's that extra money you pay on the sales tax for the environment and other things. And those are, dollars are targeted chiefly to smaller rural cities. The PFAS Source Reduction Initiative, we put a stakeholder group together. That initiative did pass in trying to get reductions of wastewater into your processing facilities. Next three items were childcare. We actually got more money for childcare facility grants than we asked for. Once again, the appropriations chairs had a whole bunch of money reining in from the federal government, a lot of them, kind of like, what do we do with all this money? So they put some more into childcare than what we even were advocating for. That's a competitive grant program for facilities grants, mainly used in the rural areas, by the way. So for childcare, we've got a multiplicity of problems with childcare. Regulatory problems is a big one. The Health Department, Human Services, et cetera, are frustrating some of our providers to the point where they're just giving up. And we're trying to get our arms around that as well. We're not going to fund our way out of this, and we're not going to deregulate our way out of this. It's probably going to have to be a blending of the two to come up with a real solution on childcare. The bottom two, mainly money for training and business development that'll run through the initiative foundations. And we got some increases in dollars for those, both in this by any and the next. The next slide, on the next page, the BDPI program. That is for either attracting or growing businesses in rural Minnesota. It's an only rural program. We hatched it up in our office. The metro is not eligible for this program. What this is, is if you're going to bring a business to a rural community or expand a business, it's not to pay for their roof or their business. That's their job to do that as a private entrepreneur. What this is, is if they need a sewer pipe, a water pipe, a service road, or some kind of public infrastructure run out to that particular business, this is a way for us to provide that service. It's a public service that helps them. We don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox when we compare with the North Dakota and South Dakota when it comes to the tax climate, so we have to have some other things in the toolbox to compete with that. And there was no bonding bill this year, but there was some money in the deed appropriation for $3.5 million to keep that whole. The next three items relate to housing. The Fix-It Program did not get appropriated. That was a new idea that some folks had on rehabbing. Instead of buying brand-new housing, why don't we rehab some of the stuff that we have? Make it habitable for rental property. The other two related to, the one didn't get funded at all, was a bonding program for public infrastructure grants. The other one was workforce development fund dollars for $4 million that did get funded. And then lastly, we always advocate for our city street program. Those communities like Crookston that are north of 5,000 people get an automatic appropriation of the gas tax. In the Constitution, in Minnesota cities over 5,000 get about 9% of the gas tax. About 29% or so goes to counties. About 50-some percent, I believe, goes to the trunk highway fund. So you blend all of that down to, you know, it comes out to about 100%. There's a little money DOT takes on the side for administration. Unfortunately, the little cities that are below 5,000 get no appropriation from the gas tax, and that's in the Constitution. We're not going to go change the Minnesota Constitution. It's a long and complicated process to get that done. And so we advocate for fairness for those smaller cities, a general fund appropriation for them, and we were able to get $18 million for that program for the smaller cities. They still have road issues in those small towns, but they get no money from the gas tax. And I'm guessing Crookston probably gets $400,000 to $500,000, I'm guessing. I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but it's got to be.
I don't know off the top of my.
It's got to be north of 400. I know Redwood Falls is 5,200 people, and they get about $350,000. So you've got to get more than that. There's a lot of angst from the cities under 5,000 over this, so we try to do our best to balance those needs. With that, I know we've had some discussion a little bit in some of my other city visits on the census, and what I would characterize as wildly inaccurate census data that's come back from the federal government. I know you're shocked that they might screw something up. But some of these cities that I've been looking at, I've looked at Crookston in detail, but to say they have hundreds of vacant houses is a joke. There's no way Thief River Falls has 600 vacant houses. There's no way that Red Lake Falls has 60 empty houses. And so the appeals process is going to be exercised by some communities to appeal as they look at formulas, everything from transportation aid to local government aid, you name it. That is a process that's there. I don't understand it fully, but it may be something that you want to take a peek at if you feel your community has been wronged. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have, Mr. Mayor.
Questions?
Is there still money in that child grant stuff?
Yes, the child grant fund, Mr. Mayor and members, the competitive grant fund is funded. It's the multimillion dollars that are left. If you have a facility that is in town looking for dollars, I would definitely apply for that.
Is there a cap or limit for what you can apply for?
Yes, it is capped, and I'm trying to remember how much the amount was, but it's not like the whole fund can go to one community. Yeah.
I hope not.
Yeah, right.
So the same with, as far as different daycare providers, they can each apply?
I think that one is center-based. I don't think it is for in-home providers.
Center.
I think it's only centers. It's a good question. And frankly, in a lot of our smaller cities, the in-home daycares are the majority of the providers. That's where the majority of the kids go. Red Lake Falls just told me tonight that they lost half their providers in the last two years. Went from six to three. So we've got an issue. There's no doubt about it that if we continue down this road, there's going to be nobody left for childcare. We've got in vitro waiting lists now. People find out they're pregnant, they don't call their mom. They call the neighboring childhood, for childcare providers, because if they don't answer the phone, mom is going to be the childcare provider.
Like you were saying with the regulations too, that does seem to be a big stumbling block for a lot of people. Are they doing anything to try and lighten that up a little bit?
Yeah, we've been trying to do some analysis of neighboring states. And I live down in Marshall, and South Dakota has, well, all the neighboring states have less regulations than Minnesota, not shocking. Some of them relate to health and safety, some relate to training. There's training requirements. We were down at Lakefield, and their daycare provider happened to be there that night. She said, "I have to go through this long training process." And they don't come out to Lakefield to do it. They don't even come to Wyndham to do it, to the county seat. Her closest location is almost 100 miles away for training, which is ridiculous.
Yeah.
So if the government wants to require this stuff, they need to make it user-friendly, or put it on Zoom or something. She said, "I could do it." It's the same boring presentation every year. So put it on Zoom and let me drone through it. But there's certain things like that, that she's just like ready to kind of throw her hands up and say, "Forget it." There are, now Warren, which isn't, you know, the end of the world from here, they were going to put a childcare center together with two ladies that were not retirement age, but maybe 10 years from it, but neither had a four-year degree. And the state said, "Well, one of you has to have that." Well, do you have to have a degree to love kids? I mean, that's kind of dumb. So they said, "Never mind." We have a variety of communities that have abandoned Lutheran and Catholic schools that are small, but have nice kitchens, nice classrooms. They need a little refurbishing. Some of this grant money could be used to help with that. But the government almost makes it like they don't want people to do this, because they're getting to the point where people can go work a digiki and get benefits and not have to worry about all this stuff. And so we're trying to quantify the things that make sense. Obviously, nobody wants to put children's lives in danger. Nobody in this room wants that. But to think someone in St. Paul loves the kids more than we do locally is also laughable. So I think we're going to have to find kind of a list of all of these regulations the neighboring states have and what we have, and then what do we have that we don't need, and then pitch them. And if any of you know your daycare providers, and they could provide Representative Keel and Senator Johnson examples, we would be happy to work with them on that.
You know, this isn't a new story. I mean, it's been going on for years. Are they moving anywhere on their regulations?
They passed one modest bill two years ago. And that one was, if you have other kids in the home under 13, they don't have to go to the sheriff's office for fingerprinting. That was the major breakthrough that they did, which, you know, sure, that's great. But they got a lot more to go than that kind of thing. You might have been, I'm trying to think who you guys had at the conference. The mayor of Ely stood up and said their daycare provider, now this is an in-home provider, who was licensed, had to go get diapers or milk at the store, and they left another competent adult, who was there most of the time anyway, to watch these six kids while they ran to the store. The state found out about it and took her aid away for the entire day, because she was gone for 15 minutes to go get diapers. So it's that kind of nonsense that people say, "Never mind. How about I just forget about doing this, and I'll go work at, you know, the local kindergarten or something, and just forget this whole thing?" So those are, the examples are there. We just have to figure out, okay, how do we? She said, "I'd even be fine if they docked me for an hour's worth of aid, but to take all day for every kid away is pretty punitive."
Yeah.
When you're trying to do the right thing.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, is there a second? Second by Don. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish, anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings. Moving on. Ashley?
Yes, Your Honor. Item 8.01 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed local street improvement project 975. Stevens Drive to Hoven Lane to Radisson Road by street reconstruction.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Joe?
Second.
Don, second. Thank you. Discussion?
Are we going to get a list of what people's assessments are? So when people come and say it's too much or can't pay it, we're going to be able to see what they've got?
Go ahead.
So we will be sending out the final adoption amount. So in the next week, we will be sending that out. And then on the 22nd, we're going to hold a public hearing, and that is when they can come and voice their concerns, if they have any, so.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.02 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed local-funded street improvement project 976. Grant Street, North Front to Wyman Lane by street reconstruction, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, second?
A second.
Thank you. Delane, discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Right, motion carries.
Item 8.03 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed federal-funded street improvement project 977. North Front Street, 6th Street to Sherman Street by Batumines Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Christie, second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Discussion?
Is he recording or outside? Is there any other work that needs to be done on any of these streets?
Just the siding?
Yeah, we've got some street signs here. Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.04 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed federal-funded street improvement project 978. Riverside Avenue, Victoria Street to Summit Avenue by Batumines Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delane, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Christie. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.05 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed federal-funded street improvement project 979. Elm Street to 4th Street to Summit Avenue by Batumines Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, second?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delane, discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.06 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed federal-funded street improvement project 980. 4th Avenue, North, North Broadway Street to Alexander Street by Batumines Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
God.
A second.
Don and Steve, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.07 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed federal-funded street improvement project 981. Central Avenue, North Ash Street to Elbridge Street by Batumines Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delane, second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.08 is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed local-funded street improvement project 982. 7th Avenue South, South Main Street to Marshall Street by Batumines Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Brutton?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine, or excuse me, item eight point zero nine is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed federal funded street improvement project nine eighty-three. South Broadway Bridge, South Main Street to Houston Avenue by Concrete Mill and Overlay, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Tom. Second by Clayton. Discussion.
Bridge looks nice.
It's definitely nice.
Lot better than it was.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Can I have roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Bratton.
Aye.
Jordy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one zero is a res- resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed assessments for unpaid water and sewer charges for the current services, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, second.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Delane. Discussion.
I have one question on that. You know, like, now, people that weren't paying their rent, if there was, how many, I don't know how many there were, but if they weren't paying their rent, were they paying their water bills?
Brandon.
If they didn't, did they just keep piling up on the landlord?
The protection for the tenants for their not having to pay rent and apply to water and sewer, so, um, through that period, if they didn't pay their water bill, the services were shut off. Once they got, we get, the first month, they don't pay, and then they get their second bill if they don't pay, so they're technically two months delinquent when we disconnect their services, so. I looked at the list this morning, and it's kind of the same.
And that could be requested by the landlord, correct?
Yep, and we send, when, when we, uh, send the two-month delinquent notification to the tenant, the landlord gets a copy of that at the same time. So they're aware of the situation, so this shouldn't be any surprise to them.
So it's no more than, like I say, two months behind then?
Yep. Which depends on your usage.
Yeah.
And, you know, they'll be two months behind, and, and just because they get shut off, the, there are small, uh, charges that will reoccur, just the minimums. Um, if they don't pay and get the water turned back on. I think I, that the highest bill I think I saw this, this morning was like three hundred dollars, but most of them were, you know, hundred-ish.
So this goes back to the county taxes, is, do collect it? Does it go on their taxes?
It goes on the property owner's taxes.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Hearing none. Can I have roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Bratton.
Aye.
Jordy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item eight point one one is a resolution to approve a donation from Jean and Jerry Oshack for the Kirkston Fire Department smoke detectors, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
I'll second. But, whoever.
We'll just do Tom.
Okay. Flip a coin. Discussion.
I guess we have somebody that does that.
Yep. Hearing none. Can I have roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Ved Bratton.
Aye.
Jordy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point one two is a resolution to approve a financial accounting review for Kirkston Housing and Economic Development Authority, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dawn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton. We'll have discussion. Amy, a brief.
Very briefly, and I'm gonna invite, um, Robert Barnes, and for those that may be just tuning in this week, our new community development director, who is also serving as the executive director for the Cheetah Board. Um, is gonna come up, if you would, and just explain a little bit about that. He and I have had some really good discussions. City staff, Cheetah staff have worked, um, with him on just diving into some of the reports that I think we've all agreed at one point or another have been a bit hard to get through. Talking through some plans on how we get to where we wanna be. Um, Robert?
Thank you. Uh, there is no question that Cheetah is a dynamic organization, has a lot of irons in the fire, it has a lot of projects working, uh, they, they cover a, a good deal of the city. It is, it is part of best business practices that when a chief executive, particularly one that has been there for a, a time, uh, departs, that the, a, a, a review is done so that a baseline can be established going forward. That simply confirms everything that we know in the past, and sets a baseline and a standard, uh, for going forward, uh, into the future. Uh, this is simply a procedural matter. Uh, we want to get some insight as to how we can do some things better. We want to get some insight as to how we can keep doing things that are done well. And this is just a matter of, uh, having someone come in and give us some advice and give, take a look at what we're doing, and maybe give us some ideas on how we could do it a little bit better.
And we have the funding available and the, uh, Valley Tech Park budget for that?
We do. It's coming before you today, as this is above my spending limit, one, and two, it was not budgeted in that line specifically for this purpose. However, there are funds in the Valley Tech Park budget which falls under the city's budget authority, um, that are not planned to be spent this year. That would, at the end of the year, go into reserves. Um, we feel that there's still adequate balance to cover the rest of that fund's expenses, um, to, to move forward with that. And I will say, this, um, this firm came at a recommendation. I had just asked some other city administrators around our area if they had used anyone. Um, and this came as a recommendation from someone that had used them and had, had really good, uh, reviews for them and an experience, so wanted to bring that forward to you.
Couple of questions. This, this is an audit, correct?
It is not an audit, no sir.
Not an audit?
No sir. Now, you get, they get an audit every year.
Okay. So, and then the other question I have is there, I mean, we, we chose one, one company. Was there an opportunity for any type of bids to be put out, and just to see if it could have been done for a little bit cheaper price tag?
We did not go out for bids on, in this case. I asked, because this is more of a, a specialized engagement, um, different than our annual audit, which is checking our IRS compliance, our GAAP reporting. And, and because this did come upon recommendation from another administrator, we just did ask them if they would provide a quote for us, and felt it was reasonable for the work that we had asked for.
So basically, it's not an audit at all? It's more of education?
I, yes.
I guess my concern is why, I mean, that should be his job to be able to do that, and I guess, like I said, the thirteen thousand, when we paid fifteen thousand for an audit so many months ago, to put another thirteen thousand for, uh, advice, I think is kind of extreme, is my opinion.
Well. I wouldn't call it advice. Um, it, we certainly do hope that will be part of the recommendations. This will not and does not take place of the annual audit that has been completed, um, this past year and in the past by Brady Marks. That will still continue to be done, your audited financial statements for Cheetah and both the city as well. This is looking at a little bit different. During an audit, like through Brady Marks, what they do is pull test transactions. They're not going to take and look at one specific category if we ask for our loans. Are we, how are we administering our loans? Are we being consistent with our collateral? Are we following our own procedures? They're doing test transactions more to test your compliance, um, for your, your IRS, your state regulations. This is a little bit different. We really think it is an accounting review, and in fairness to a new board, new staff, knowing what your baseline is and what you're starting with to move forward and what you're working with. I've been looking at some of those reports for the last twelve months, and they are hard to tie back together. There's some advice we would like on the software we're using. The budget is not loaded into the software at this point into Cheetah. The payroll is done in a separate system, so advice in that manner on how we're spending our dollars on software, does that make the most sense? Is it providing the very best reports back to the board and the public? Those are the types of things we are hoping to get through, and if they see anything that they think we could or should be doing better, um, those things will come back as a recommendation, then in their findings to the board.
I think too, you know, just the way the financials and the budget is set up now with, uh, the Cheetah, you know, it takes a while to grasp or get a handle on it, and I think, you know, hopefully, if we go this route, we can, I don't know, streamline it, make it a little bit easier to understand. Anybody new stepping into that board, there's, it takes a while to get a handle on all that information.
Well, even if you do a complete changeover of whoever's in there, it's gonna have, it's gonna take them some time to get a handle on that, too. It's not gonna be, okay, we're gonna go do this, and all of a sudden, oh, I understand everything. It's gonna be the same thing. It's gonna be a learning curve.
You've been here a long time. Do you understand that, everything in there?
Not everything, but a lot of it.
There are some, there are issues with the fact that we can't simply provide and run a budget report or a revenue and expense report. Um, that comes out of one system and is hand keyed into a budget document. There are a lot of things that we feel like we can, um, probably clean up and do a little bit better and provide better information.
But now, you're gonna do another audit in May around that time, okay?
Your regu-, yes, our regular audit would be on schedule.
So couldn't you ask Brady Marks at that time to do something like this here, too? I mean, rather than spending this kind of money right now.
It would be a different engagement. I don't believe they would do it as part of your normal audit. This would be a se-, what's that?
Do you know if they would or not?
If they would do a separate type of accounting? I would think not.
Well, these recommendations that you're looking for, however, to do it, I think it's...
They do, but not as, that would not, the findings we were hoping to get in the reporting would not come from your regular audit, I don't think.
I think with Brady Marks, you'd have to take out, let's say, if there's five, six, twenty items in there that you want them to, um, do kind of a review on them, you'd have to pull those out where I think what we're looking at is kind of an in-depth of everything in there to see how we can improve and move forward and do better.
I guess my envision on this is to let him get his feet wet a little longer to a- answer more of his questions, to maybe down the ro- road to do this, but for thirteen thousand, if somebody advises him to do what he needs to do is, is excessive, I think. We only pay fifteen thousand dollars for a full-year audit. I mean, this is for one session to go through the stuff and advise him what things, better things we could do better.
And keep in mind, your regular audits are looking at a twelve-month snapshot and looking at specific test transactions, not your policies, procedures, are you following your internal controls? This is hoping to look back a couple of years and help us really understand. There are, for an example, um, the, some of the grants don't show up on the budget form at all. The grant revenue, the grant expense, and the Cheetah match. That's really difficult to, to trace, to understand where those reserve dollars came from. Are they restricted? There are some things that we could certainly wait. I don't believe that it's a matter of the fog clearing and the new people's heads to understand it. It's very complex, pulling data from multiple systems that don't talk to each other. The reports that come out in the management report are not easy to follow. Um, you have to understand that code, I'm kind of making this up, one-four-nine-six-two is a cash account. Well, you don't know that. You have to know that in that line of accounts, and it's, it is really challenging to come in and make good recommendations to, as a staff member to the board, present to the public, and try to understand what has been happening for years back.
So this, um, will this cause extra stress on the staff that's probably already taxed right now? I mean, are they gonna have to do a lot of research and stuff like that to help this, help with this process?
There will certainly be requests to pull, to pull documents from, um, our finance director, Ryan Lindwee, does serve as the assistant treasurer on the Cheetah Board and has access to the same reporting system, so certainly can assist there on the city side as well.
Well, they better, they should, they better not tax Teresa anymore, 'cause I, I go through there every night and lock that place up. I've done it ever since I started working for UMC. And she's out there working just about every stinking night. To add more stuff onto her now, I think it's, it's, you're asking an awful lot of that lady at, uh, you know, like I say.
Did we ever fill her, the other job?
We have posted once and have posted again, and, um, applicants were reviewed today. So that's, there are, I believe, some interviews that'll be scheduled.
So in your professional opinion, you don't think, or, um, these two couldn't work together for a while to develop a system that they would understand, a system that they could do themselves to help understand and simplify it? You know, over time, to, to get it to something reasonable, before you spend thirteen thousand?
As far as could those two sit down and develop how the GL structure could look and what's, what a financial software that could spit out a budget retor- report, hundred percent. Going back and understanding years' worth of loans, and were they collateralized? Were they consistent? Were, um, our own internal, and I'm speaking of Cheetah, were those policies and procedures followed? Was board approval required or obtained? Are there loan documents? I don't, I do think that's something you would want a specialized engagement, in my opinion. And that's just one example. Um, I don't mean that to sound like that's the only focus there, but I think certainly there's things that staff could develop a better financial reporting software, but I think it's a little bit more in-depth than that to let new people know what baseline you're starting with and where to move forward and what changes to make.
I, I, I agree, I think, with Steve. I think we ought to wait a little while, let these get their feet wet, uh, work with Teresa out there. I mean, she's very knowledgeable with what goes on out there and stuff, and it, I also look at, you know, that Ag Innovation Center is gonna be built, and there's been talk about ORI moving out there to the Ag Innovation Center. If they move out, that's one of your big tenants out here. You better keep as much in your budget as you can out there. Or, uh, you know, there was one time, we were gonna give that building away, 'cause we couldn't afford to keep it.
Yeah, but the deal is, is that the building now is for profit. It's not really been used as an incubator over the years, neither. And that's, that was the intent of it.
You still gotta have funds coming in it to run the place.
I understand that, but it needs to be back used as an incubator, too. It's a for-profit building now.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a building to try and keep the lights on in there, and it's been making some profit the last few years. At one time, there was a healthy, uh, debt against that place for us, and that's why I say, we were thinking about giving it away at one time, just so we didn't have to have that debt. So we still want it to make some money and still make it be an incubator, too.
Yeah, I mean, it is a concern, 'cause the rumor is that URI is moving out soon, that plant is done, and, like I said, that's gonna bankrupt the, the system that they have there now for that building to cash flow.
We did just bring on a new communi- community development director who has experience with an incubator. We've had some discussions. I don't, unless Robert disagrees with me, I don't believe we have anything to present to you this evening, but those discussions have been had and, um, are being had with Teresa and myself, and...
So I think that the sooner we can get this done, and I understand it, the better off it would be, so I would hope.
So, Robert, um, I, I guess I, I may, maybe I'm not, you know, opposed to this, but would you find it to be more, um, helpful if it was, you were able to, I mean, you're just brand new? And let's just say, six months down the road, you, I mean, you, some, right now, maybe, lack of a better term, you don't know what you don't know, maybe. Is that fair?
Oh, absolutely.
So, so, that being said, I mean, maybe if you get six months down the road, maybe would it be better to, to do it that, do it then, then you probably have some better questions to ask the auditor, or, they're not, it's not an audit, but the, the, this, this company that comes in to do this process? Is that, is that fair?
Uh, you know that we're gonna do whatever it is the council asks us to do.
I, I, I realize that, but I'm asking your opinion on what your thoughts are.
Yeah, right, right now, my opinion is this. Uh, this is not an audit. We are, we are gonna ask this firm to look at some very specific transactions, and to look at some very specific activity, and help us understand how things were done. And to, to go look at, y'all, y'all get the books, and the board gets the books every month, and, and the second thing I heard on my first day at work is, I hope you can clear up those books, 'cause we don't understand them. This is the answer to that question, and this helps us get much further down the road. We can, it's six months from now, you're gonna be at another audit cycle, and whoever you choose to do the audit will come out there. But there are things that audits do not do. Audits do not go, go past anything other than the information that is provided, and it's written right in the audit. We do not ver- validate what is brought to us. We simply work with what is given to us, and that's what we all do. So now the question becomes, how do we know what we don't know? And the way it's been done in other communities is bringing in a firm that will take the time to look at things that the auditors have audited, but now, what's the story behind the numbers? What caused this account to be used and another account not used? What caused this to be listed and other, another item not listed? And we will do whatever, whatever direction you send us, we're gonna give you a hundred percent of our best. But the real question becomes, yes, they have audits. Now, let's find out what those audits mean.
Ryan, do you think that you can, you will work, uh, if this happens, right now?
Well, it'd be a lot to undertake at this time, yes, but, I mean, what he's asking is a very common thing. With my previous experience in other jobs, anytime you have a...
No, my opinion with what Robert is asking is not an uncommon thing in the accounting world. Um, when you have someone that is an executive director or your chief financial officers, it's common to bring another outside entity to come in to look at those things. You guys are well aware of different news articles you'll hear about this company had embezzling happen, or these employees stole these types of items and stuff, but all those companies still had their audits. You know, this is just going to be a more in-depth review of some of the more questionable things to which Robert wants to get more of a better understanding on. And, um, I have been meeting with Robert, and we are talking about trying to merge more of these things together and tie them all to a general ledger, but when you have separate systems, you know, they're using Yardi for their record keeping, okay? And then they're using, you know, another software to do their payroll. Well, then, those are just journal entries that are funneling over into another system. So if you could do just one system to envelop everything, you're gonna get a lot better information into it. So that's what I'm kind of working at now, looking at Yardi, whether its capabilities that maybe aren't being used, a- and, and that.
Would both of you prefer this pace?
Pardon me?
Would both of you pre- uh, prefer this pace to go forward with this motion? Would both of you prefer, uh, prefer this pace to go forward with this motion?
Um, I guess, you know, that would be more of a question, you know, to ask Robert, what he would want, since he is the new director.
Can I ask ultimately, what would come out of this is possibly a clarification of procedures going forward as well as possibly a better, um, reporting system to us as we're looking through these different accounts? Because I, I mean, there are things that I question, and all I know is numbers. And I'm like, what does this mean and why is this dollar amount here? So I think, for me personally, I would like to see reports that are clearly defined, that I'm not having to go and email and ask what this number means. Um, I think that, and I honestly, for the transparency of, of anybody looking at that, I feel sometimes it's like looking at another language and trying to decipher it, knowing about this much of that language. And so if that would be what would come out of this, then I think it would be very valuable.
Well, and that is ultimately our goal. Because right now, you know, when she does this financial statement for you guys for the months, there's many columns in an Excel spreadsheet that's getting keyed into that. I like to use the software to generate any report, because all your information is in that software. And there should be a way to extract any type of report to which you want, because most softwares are just a database.
Right, well, and also, I mean, human error, king in something or king in many numbers. You just never know where you might miss up. So I, I agree, that would be a better sense of, of managing those type of reporting things as well.
And I always mention, you know, about six months, you know, and then have the discussion. I think it's only fair for, uh, you know, Robert is the new director of Cheetah. You know, just to have the accounting review on it. If you wait six months and try to have Ryan and Robert work this way, where they could be better spending their times on, their time on other things, they're gonna get there that much faster with this review versus them trying to dig through this for six months when they could be doing other things.
What, um, what is, if this does get approved, what would be the timeline and, of, of, and what would be the completion date and the report date, I guess?
I don't, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe they, yes, they did give us one?
They couldn't commit to a deadline until we had permission to move forward. They hope they can do it in the next 60 days, but that, that is a conversation on the telephone. It's nothing in writing to that effect.
And I did want to add, Robert had mentioned to us, coming up on the next audit cycle, you're also coming up on your next budget cycle, the farther out we get. And one of the things we believe needs some, maybe correction or enhancements, if you will, is the budget. And if you miss that cycle, you are looking out then into 2024 before making any changes that may be helpful.
So one of the things for me is, is I don't, I don't like taking on expenses like this without getting bids. I, we're spending the public's money. And part of me coming on to here is, I, I want to be very judicious of spending the taxpayer dollars on different types of things. I, I, I would like to, I, I would like to see, you know, listen, just because it's a lower bid doesn't mean we go with it. Maybe this firm offers a bunch better things than what the low bid might be. We need to decide that as a council, that, okay, we're gonna go with this bid, but this is why.
My other concern with this is our levy that we still want to drop down. And yet, we're spending another $13,000, which is not gonna help the levy on that side either. I was thinking, you know, if that gives him more time to look into the stuff and write down his questions, write down his concerns, and, you know, and I agree with Delaney to get some more bids. If you got just somebody from another community have used these people, great. But if we send it out to multiple firms that do this, maybe it's 10,000. You know, if we can save $3,000 or 5,000, I don't know, you know, whatever it is, but-
I do want to make one clarification. The, number one, this fund does not affect the levy anyway. And these are in $2021 and will not affect your 2022 budget. If we don't do it now, we will have to find, find that in the 2022 budget. But our proposal is to pay out of 2021 funds.
You know, you talk about the software. Okay, so, so whatever their fin- finding is, are we gonna have to purchase new software and stuff now, or?
I would hope, I would hope that it would have the capabilities that we can add or add another module to, that would do what we need.
Well, is there any way to find out that now before we do all this?
Um, I am checking it out now.
Okay, well, that's why I say, I'd rather wait until we find out what all we're, what we're looking at here. If we're gonna have to spend another pile of money for software, that's another expense.
Well, I mean, that, that being said, and I, I, a lot of our software I am finding since I've been on the council is outdated. We're gonna need to spend money regardless on, on different types of things like that. I mean, I don't think we should, I mean, I've been an advocate for, for doing it. I mean, a forensic look at, at the, at the Cheetah books myself. I, I, I wish, um, I wish we'd have some bids. But we don't, and so I guess that's, that's, this is, I wish we'd had a little more time to visit about this as well. Maybe, maybe in like a ways and means, I don't know if this is the type of thing that could come upon ways and means or, or not.
Here's the, this particular, um, item is before you because of budget, really, the expense. Discussing at this body about the Cheetah software, while it, it does play into this particular conversation, will be something that'll be had at the Cheetah Board level and in the Cheetah budget, because that does have some other funding sources with housing. So some of it we're talking about as a whole, because all of those things play into that. But those discussions about the software and things that, that Cheetah will, in the end, purchase or, or utilize isn't really a decision that has to be made here with this particular item in front of you.
But you know, with that being said, like, like you say, it isn't gonna, this, this fund isn't gonna affect the levy a bit. So if that money is in that fund right now, and you don't spend it, it should be in that fund next year. So I mean, if it waits a while, what's the, what's the problem? You're not, that money isn't just gonna disappear.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that the money is the issue. I think the staff at the city and your Cheetah staff is recommending to move forward with it at this time.
I think it's only fair for, uh, Robert to have a clean slate jumping into this. I, you know, I don't-
Well, that's my thing, you said it's not an audit, so I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Or, I mean, I'm tired, it's not an audit, it's a re, financial accounting review. But I just think it's only fair for Robert, he's, uh, the new, uh, community development director. I think he should have a clean slate going through this. Make it much easier for not only Robert, but for all of us to understand the financials and, I mean, I struggle going through those financials. 13,000, yes, it's a lot of money, but I don't think it's a lot of money for this, uh, accounting review.
I would like to know-
I think it's in the ballpark.
I would like to know, Robert and Ryan, what your thoughts are. Can this be done for that amount of money, or do we need less money, or whatever? The timing is very important right now. I think, I think we should move forward and, and get this study done with as soon as possible, because there's a lot of questions that have been asked about this, this kind of situation. So anyway, that's my opinion.
I think if it's in their professional opinion that they're requesting this, and I think, you know, yeah, if we waited a little bit of time, but is it that things are being done, maybe not the way that they should, or maybe that we could have done it clearer going forward? I don't see why we wouldn't give them the courtesy to consider this, if the funding's available. And that it leads to us having a better understanding in our reporting process. It helps us understand and make sure that we are doing things in the correct, most transparent way in Cheetah. And if they're requesting it, and this is common practice, as Ryan had said, I think that this is something we should consider.
I'd still like to see it go out on bids, because like I said, when, when you're over your level of spending is, where it comes back to the council, is usually, should go for bids. I mean, I, I agree with Delaney. I mean, I'm not against them not getting the, the information and whatever. But I think it'd be, if that was me, I guess, is my own opinion. But if I had more of the information, I sat down for six months to study what we have. I, I can tell you that, that budget, that whole system over there with HUD, Cheetah, everything that's in there is very complex. And I think for him, as long as he's been in here, and he, not to get his feet wet yet, to be able to say, all right, now I have a question, this and this, he can chart it, he can make a list. So then, if we do get it out in bids, we find a company that gets it, maybe cheaper, hopefully. And where he has everything documented, what he needs information on. Maybe that would save time, money, whatever, if he knew what he was, questions he was asking. Just my opinion.
My opinion is that if the money is there right now, it's not gonna affect our budget. I think we should move ahead.
Let's, uh, call for the vote.
Clat?
I am not against doing this at all. I am voting nay because of lack of, um, competing bids.
Ved Bratton?
Nay.
Jordy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Nay.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Nay.
Your honor, we have three yeses and we have four noes. It does not pass.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Reports and staff recommendations, Amy.
Yes, thank you. One, I wanted to just talk a little bit, give some updates on our intersection at Robert and Broadway. I was invited to speak with the Tri-Valley Executive Board at their meeting, I think it was a couple weeks ago. Just to answer questions, hear the board's thoughts, provide them the same updates that I was able to provide to you at our last council meeting. I hope most of you saw that Mendot did create a press release for us on October 20th that we did share out to our media outlets, on our Facebook page, just explaining a little bit. They're hoping to start early this week on the lane closure. And just as a reminder, that right turn lane, as you're going, um, north on Broadway, will be closed. They will be using a form of a barricade. And that middle lane will become a combination through lane and turn lane. The two parking stalls on both the east and west side of that intersection in front of our Tri-Valley Building and our Fournay Building have been made restricted, no parking. That allows a little bit more space for a truck turning and improves sightlines if you're making that right turn going north. We are working, Mendot is actually assisting with working with our local post office to relocate. There is a post office drop box on the Fournay side. So that is going to be relocated, just a bit of a process to get through that. And then, your honor, I do have, I had two department heads that couldn't be here this evening. Do you mind if I give their reports as well? Okay, um, from Mr. Hefta in our building official department. He attended a local training with Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry on apartment building plan review. Also reviewed a training where they reviewed code for typical residential foundations. Continued observation on the new flyer CAD building addition. Site work at Ag Innovation is complete for the contractor, and we're awaiting a submittal of building plans for review. And there are some ongoing inspections in residential area on some slabs. Two-family home on Icoff, commercial office space downtown. And there's a zoning review of a proposed business on an existing site plan. That was from Mr. Hefta and from Mr. Solberg in our Parks and Rec Department. The Parks crews took out all of the fishing piers, docks, and kayak launches. And they are finishing up blowing lines. The youth hockey schedule is almost complete. Ice is in the event rink and the blue rink. The gold rink will have ice in mid-November. Hoops on Halloween was on October 24th and was a success. Basketball floor will be left in the gold rink for a week and a half for players to come and shoot or play basketball. And I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Amy.
With that being said, was there some trouble with the compressors or something over there?
There, there was, yes. There was one part that needed to be replaced because of the power surge during the storm. And I think the other, ooh, what was, there was a second issue.
I believe the controls, how they were programmed.
Oh, yes, the computer, yes. There was a computer issue with the controls, and I believe that is all squared away. I asked him if we were all frozen up over there this morning, and he said yes. So he's been keeping an eye on that and working with the electric company and then also the parts company to get everything back in order.
Did they have any kind of surge protectors on any of that stuff, since he was saying it was a power surge?
I don't, I don't know that in those controls for sure. The, the part that ended up having to be replaced was actually quite inexpensive. That was from the power surge. So that, that worked out well, got that back going, and then had the other issue with the computer programming, so.
Thank you, Amy. So I don't forget, let's start with Chad.
Very good, your honor, thank you. I too am happy to report that we're fully recovered from the surge damage that occurred on the 8th with the replacement of the internet cable modem here at City Hall and also at the fire department. So things are nice and stable and operational now. I've spent time up at the sports arena. We have now completed repair, or I should say, the vendors completed repair of the Live Barn, live streaming service that is up there. And we are now looking at the in-house camera system as well. There'll be some work that Garden Valley Telephone will be doing for us on a time and materials basis. And I'm getting a quote from them on what the estimated labor will be for repair on those cameras.
Thank you, Chad. Paul, anything? Oh, have the lieutenant tonight, it's a bonus.
Hello, yeah, so Paul asked for, if I could give the report tonight, just mainly because I've organized the Crookston Community Halloween Party for the last 12 years. But this is the 34th year that the Crookston Police Department has organized a Crookston Community Halloween Party. Normally, we have it at the Crookston National Guard Armory. And what that kind of looks like is games out in the event area, spook house, candy, and like a light meal. Given the COVID situation last year and this year, uh, last year, we did a Halloween food drive-through event to kick off the Leo Club's annual food drive at the Crookston High School. Had real good success with that, so we're doing that again this year. So October 31st, um, on Halloween from 4, I'm sorry, yeah, 4 to 7, West Parking Lot of the Crookston High School. We're gonna do a Halloween drive-through event to kick off the Crookston High School Leo Club's annual food drive. So, um, last year, they had about 200 people show up or 200 bags of candy given out. So it was a success last year, hoping for the same thing. Basically, what we're asking is you come in and donate a non-perishable food item, and you'll get a can, a bag of candy, safety materials, and some other trinkets in there. So I would also just like to thank, we have a couple really generous, uh, community members, business, business owners that donate to this to make it happen. And again, thank the Crookston High School for letting us use their facility this year to put that on.
What date was that again?
Halloween, October 31st, from 4 to 7.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you have anything?
I just want to take a second to thank the Oshocks for their generous donation to our fire department. That is very nice of them. And we have had several other citizens that donate to that program, which we believe is extremely positive and well worth our time. And just want to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Had a meeting with Emma from the state last week, and the MIF application for new flyers proceeding forward. There's gonna be a initiation meeting that will be the next step in this process, where we get together with David and outline some of the parameters. But the, the big change for the application, um, he's moving it, the 280,000 that he was going to use for equipment now got moved into the, um, property. And with working with the state and with Chad and stuff, that, they said that that was the much better fit for David and the time constraints and stuff that they had at the time.
Ryan, I would just add, for construction, right? Is that what it was for, moved from, okay.
Um, and then, um, if everything stays on track with that, with his guarantee of the 35 employees, come April, I believe it's the 22nd, then that's where the accounting will take place for us. That, for the two years from that date, he'll have to maintain that extra 35 from his base employees of that rate. So there'll be accounting that we have to do- So, there'll be accounting that we have to do monthly with that also. And the funds do not get distributed to him until he has spent out-of-pocket 560,000 to get the other. But that will all come through the city and go and turn then to New Flyer. Also met with Tracy, she's the one who replaced Kim at Brady Mart's. Started looking at some of the recommendations that they gave us for cleaning out some of our accounts, so we started doing those entries now and going through those. Had an investment meeting with another company, Besarids, the one that we currently use, just to kind of see what are the options the city has for investing, and if they can do any better than some of the rates that we're currently getting now. And then, this month started, we have to, by the end of this month, do our IRP reporting. It has to get done for the IRP loans that the city has, and then that's when we'll give the state also the audited financials from Brady Mart's.
Thank you.
Will we, will we start beginning a monthly financial statement to see where we're all sitting?
Once these cleanup entries are done, then we can definitely, Amy and I are, that's something that we are working on.
And I'll add again, we are internally, we are doing that, we're on schedule for each month to prepare those for you at your second city council meeting. So, you'll get them on a schedule if you want to look back, but I really want to make sure we get those entries done. There's a little bit of work we need to do to go back before the auditors are ready, just to understand how some of our improvement funds and street construction funds are working, and how we're going to try to roll those into one, where right now, they're sitting as two separate. So, we have a little bit of staff work we need to do before we report back to them, but we are getting some of them done, and I think we are pretty close.
Yeah, there, there just was a couple of the reserves that were negative, that I'm trying to go back a few years to see, where did that take place, why is it that, is that just because the funds didn't get moved once the dollars came in to offset the expenses and stuff? So, just wanted to make sure that we had all those in line. So, before we bring those entries to you guys, that we know exactly why it was this dollar amount that we're correcting.
Ryan, a quick question for, I was reading through some of this, when you get your street bids, and you get your bill for that, and I can't remember which one, but the one bill is like $32,000 more or something, where does that come from? If they're, you know, let's say they bid it at $380,000 for a certain project, and the bill came, and there was, I thought there was one or two that were over and above, I don't know if that's...
Like the first phase of the... Yeah.
Where does that come from?
There's two different lines, if you remember how Kim talked about that and treating it up, all those expenses were coming in on the one line for that, but the revenues were going into another account. And then, once that job gets done, you should move those funds. And then, okay, this is what we got in, this is how much more we spent, and that would be part of when we can present a statement.
Councilman Erickson, are you talking about the bills we just paid?
I can't remember if it was that or the last month, but it was one of my senior, I think it was 32,000, I want to say was the number.
I'll have to look into that, and it looks like Rich has stepped out, but if it was one that we just saw, we'll have to look, look into that and get, get...
That was something to do in the bill side of it, over, underpayment or overpayment or underpayment. But, like I said, I just don't know if that's, because when you bid it, it's a bid, but then at the end of the thing, all the other, over expenses, which usually are, I would assume.
Yep, but a lot of stuff like that will come to you as councilmen to get the approval to pay anything.
Is there a number there that says, okay, it doesn't have to come to council, or is like over, under 10,000, or over 50?
If it was within my spending authority, we wouldn't necessarily have to, but that would depend on what it, what it was. You have seen all of the dispersments on the street projects, they've been in your consent agenda items, but if there was a particular one that was over, I'm going to have to go look at that.
I hadn't written it home, I forgot to bring it, but yeah, this is just going to be one of my questions.
And now that Rich is gone, and we'll just have to, I can't get that for you now, but...
I was just curious on how we cover that as a city, not knowing, you know, if it's over...
If it was going to be over the amount, wouldn't it have to be like a change order?
I, I would need, I need to look, but it depends on what it is, I don't, without knowing exactly what we're talking about, I hesitate to give specifics on that.
Like I said, I don't have specifics, but I was just curious on how we handle as a city, as a budgeting and whatever, but...
Okay, I will see what I can dig up on that and get something out to you.
If you just, if you find the project number, we'd be happy to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Or Ryan, sorry. I don't know, I get you two mixed up all the time. Brandon?
Last week, the street crew made, therefore, they started sweeping up leaves in the curb lines. So, we obviously had to put that on hold this week with cleanup week, so if you're unaware, it's cleanup week. So, you can put out your garbage and furniture on your garbage day. The water department, oh, the street department also poured half the sidewalk to the daycare center at Washington School. So, we're kind of going to have to watch the weather here and catch the right week here and get the other half poured. We'll get it formed up and try and pick the best time to get the other half poured here. So, once they get that all ready to go, the sidewalk will be in there formed, have access to the building. I was helping with cleanup week this week, so I didn't make myself a list of a report, but the water department is doing their final cleanup on Widman Lane for that water main that they replaced between Grant and it's kind of the dead-end alley on the north end there. I guess one clarification on the delinquent water bills for, you know, we weren't held to any standards. I don't want to sound like we were cold-hearted on that. When, there was about a six-month period during COVID when people were having a hard time paying their water bills, where we, there's a $20 card delivery fee that we waived for about six months, where we delivered the card to the home, but we didn't charge them the $20 for delivering the card. And we did work with people as much as we could, but, you know, it's, it's a fine line with working with a tenant that the homeowner is going to, at the end of the day, get stuck with the bill. So, we did contact landlords and ask them if they wanted us to let it float or not, so some did, some didn't. So, we just kind of, we did everything we could, so.
So, if you shut them off, did you charge them like a reconnection fee and all that stuff too, or?
I believe the first two months, we waived that as well. After that, when, I believe, I would have to verify that with Lynn, but yeah, we did waive that for a month or two, but...
It sounds like you did whatever you could do, so.
Yeah, tried to be fair to both ends, so that's all I have.
Just a quick, quick question on Grant Street, is there anything in the works to ever pave that? Or is the, they prefer to stay where the gravel side to the tracks are?
So, you're talking on Widman Lane?
No, it'd be the, what's the one by Seventh Street, then it'd be probably A Street, or maybe Grant, or I can't remember which one it is. It goes, just has the gravel where they just put the water main in there. So, we're from the, between North Front and the tracks. So, the only gravel on that whole end, just a short block.
Oh. I, I, we put water main in, are you, are you talking up on Sherman?
Sherman, maybe?
Yeah. I, I think it was when we put the water main in four or five years ago, I think it was talked about, and I think the current residents declined it at the time, so.
I was curious, did I was, they just redid the whole thing, but water sewer, whatever, so it's not paved, you know?
I'm pretty sure Pat brought it up, and I'm pretty sure they showed up to the public hearing and shut it down.
Good to know.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Robert, anything to add?
Nothing, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Start with Christie tonight.
Park and Rec's meeting was last Monday, and we had two items on the agenda about, they're getting some public input via a, some type of forum, asking some questions about outdoor ice rinks, where they'd like to see them this year, as well as how many they would like to see. So, apparently, we have boards for two, but there was option, maybe consideration for three, where they'd pack the ice, from what I understand. And so, they're in process at sending that survey out, or that's been sent out on the Facebook. And then, it also came to our attention that there had been a accident at the high dive at the swimming pool this summer, and they have since made it a little bit safer. But going forward, the conversation is, you know, do we keep the high dive? Do we consider a slide or some other type of water feature in that area? And so, that is still in process, that's something that's been brought to the board.
Thank you. Steve?
There's a couple things, Solberg isn't here, but can we check into the, if we could get the rink a little warmer for like CYBA? You know, that was the only complaint, good, good weekend, don't get me wrong, but you said it was a little cool in there for the younger kids to play, do the ice, and I, and I get it, but is there any way we can change things around, or whatever, with venting or whatever, just to see if we could get it for this, that particular day, a little warmer in there? I don't know if it's possible or not, but something we check into. And then, I just want to comment on, you know, Amy doing a good job with MINDOT. I've never seen MINDOT do anything fast, and they got a response in that quick. I, I'd like to see the PD for, it's a new thing with no parking, and those two spots on both sides. Well, the other day, there was two vans parked there all day, I know it's not in effect or whatever, but to be able to keep an eye on that, because it is new, people, you know, may not look at the yellow stripe there, but just for, food for thought, because I have seen quite a few cars parked there, and since they painted it last week. But yeah, kudos to Amy and her work and MINDOT for getting a quick response on that, it's amazing.
Thank you, MINDOT has been really, really helpful and very responsive. Anytime I've called, and even proactively providing updates, and that certainly helps us in our community be prepared for the changes coming up, and be able to communicate out what those changes are. But thank you for mentioning that, and I will pass that on to MINDOT as well.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Steve. Clayton?
I'd just like to thank the community and the businesses and different groups that have come forward lately, and having fundraisers and stuff for the young lady that was struck by the semi, and also Chuck Ring, who was dealing with some health issues. So, kudos to the community and businesses for doing such a great thing to help all people in need. That's all I have.
Thank you. Tom?
Just for Amy and Ryan, are we getting any, anywhere on trying to lower that levy?
Delain, whoops, sorry, anything else, Tom?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Joe?
Well, as Bobby stepped up and said, CBB, he had some questions. I just think it's very important that if we can do it in the park to bring something in to Crookston in the middle of winter when it's pretty slow, I know it's racing events that they have there, bring a lot of business to town, and, you know, and let the kids have something to do, and it's real fun to watch. I've been there and watched it several times, and Ice Buster Days, of course, is a, is a very big thing to our community. And so, if, if it can work, and I talked to Amy, and I think she's right on top of it. So, as soon as we can find that out, I think it'll be a good thing for Crookston. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Dawn, anything tonight?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Mayor, just one quick question.
Sure.
You know, I've probably talked about it, all this stuff. If we're paying for this, I would really like us to cancel it, because it's got to cost a lot of money to ship these to us, or whatever.
I, I am going to...
I don't know, if somebody wants one, they can maybe put their name in there, but it's...
I'm going to check on that as we look at our subscription renewals, but with, with budget stuff, I have not dug down that far. But oftentimes, at least in the subscriptions for some of the associations I belong to, they send them as part of your subscription, but we will check on that and see if we can't...
If it's free, I don't care, like I said, if it's paid, but I really don't want it.
Okay.
All right. I see we, looks like we have three students here tonight, come up and introduce yourself, please. Put you on the spot.
Hi, I'm George French. I'm a senior this year, and I'm here because of AP Government.
My name's Alex Kazetka, I'm a senior this year, and I'm also here because of AP Government.
Barbara Harbitt, I'm here as a junior for AP Gov.
Well, thanks for being here.
Of course.
Come back again. I guess that would have been my funny for the night. Reminder that before the next council meeting, I suppose we're going to have to jump our clocks back one hour, so you can gain that extra hour, and more daylight at four o'clock, or darkness at four o'clock in the afternoon. I know it ain't said enough, but I'd like to give a thanks to all the department heads and their staff, and Amy, and all her staff down here for everything they do. Sometimes it goes unappreciated, but thank you. We have no ways and means tonight, nothing else to come before council, we are adjourned, thank you.